Park in downtown Los Angeles. Saida Pagan has the story.
What will we have?
Our fair share.
Let them hear you in the southeast. What will we have?
Our fair share.
Let's get it.
It's called the Everyone Counts Movement, and this Census 2020 Call to Action Day was just the start of a year-long effort to ensure that all LA residents will be counted.
Every single time you get one more person to fill out a census form, that's worth $2,000. And that's all we're asking for, is to get our fair share back. Not money that's Washington's, money we produce with our labor and our hard work that we send to Washington and that we demand in a democracy comes back to us. That's why we are here.
I count.
I count.
I count.
I count.
I count.
The stakes are high. Hundreds of millions in federal dollars are given to counties based on census data. In the past, LA lost more than $650 million because the population was undercounted.
That means less food on the table for families, CalFresh programs, Head Start programs, health services. It means our infrastructure dollars don't come back home.
Besides money, Los Angeles stands to lose congressional seats and political power if there is an undercount in 2020.
Los Angeles County has well over 10 million people, and government officials say that alone makes it one of the hardest areas to count for census purposes.
The focus now is on those who have traditionally chosen not to participate in the census: the homeless, low-income residents, and the immigrant population.
Our commitment is to go to the streets, to save our members, to our family, to our neighbors, that we need to make sure that we count, that we participate in this process that is coming in April 2020.
Los Angeles officials say they are leading the way in California by teaming up now with scores of community-based organizations, unions, and other government agencies. They say with greater support, they are confident that this time around, they will be able to raise awareness well before the final census count.
Some good news: The state of California has promised a $9.4 million grant to support public outreach in LA County. Well, he became famous for his portraits of musicians on album covers during the 1980s. And now, the work of photographer Glenn Wechsler is on display to take you back to a time of big hair and excess.
I'm a photographer, and we're here at Mr. Musichead Gallery in Hollywood on Sunset Boulevard across from the Guitar Center. This is my show called "The 80s Portrait Sessions," and it's an exhibition of photography, which is kind of a time capsule of the excess of the 80s and the celebrities that kind of wore the excess. And it's supporting my new book project, which is "The 80s Portrait Sessions." It's really just kind of a cross-section of the people that I shot during that time period. It ranges from early in the decade with musicians like Shaka Khan, Bob Weir from The Grateful Dead, who's on the cover of the book. I shot him in the early 80s. Michael Jackson from the mid-80s. And just kind of a range of other artists. The 80s was just a very unique moment in time. The economy was good, and it was a period of marketing excess. I started shooting album cover art when I was a student at Art Center College of Design, and the first project I shot was an album by the Brothers Johnson, who were produced by Quincy Jones Productions, that kind of opened the doors to the musical kingdom for me. It was like saying, "Open sesame," and I got inside to this very kind of exclusive world. And once I got in, I kind of never looked back. I began shooting a lot of album covers. I shot literally hundreds before I turned 30. And during that time period, I was commissioned mostly to do these very kind of elaborate narrative works, but it also gave me access to the musicians. I always wanted to kind of back away from the more complex type of epic album cover approach and do something just kind of, you know, up close, personal, intimate, and just really connect with the artist. There's really great stories behind every session and every artist. One of the things that I have in my book is I did small little anecdotes, just kind of memories about the session and what we were doing. For me, the exhibit was really a unique opportunity to go back to my archives. It was a chance to look at some files that I hadn't seen, some as old as 35 to 40 years. So it was really kind of a trip going down memory lane. What was interesting for me is now we live in this digital world of photography, but it was my analog experience, spending years and years in the darkroom as a master darkroom printer, that informed all my decisions in creating the images for the show. So even though the work is kind of quote-unquote "digitally remastered," it's the analog world of, it's the traditional photography that informed the digital decisions for this work. So I got kind of the best of both worlds.
One man has turned riding the bus into a non-stop quest for social justice reform. Gil Reyes reports from El Pueblo in downtown.
More than 12 years and over 120,000 miles of bus trips has led to a BBC documentary, various other projects, also this exhibit in downtown Los Angeles that chronicles the plight of people struggling to get by.
So the exhibit we have right now is called Greyhound Diaries, and we worked with journalist Doug Levitt, who is a former foreign correspondent, so a journalist, who spent about 12 years on and off riding the Greyhound bus. While he was riding, he would listen to people, listen to their stories.
Some of these tales of troubled travelers are documented in downtown LA's Museum of Social Justice. The museum's Jennifer Gutierrez gives us a tour. Vintage photographs?
Photos of Doug's travels.
Over the past 12 years.
Over the past 12 years, in different Greyhound stations. So it's really stories about people living on the edge, because that's who rides the Greyhound bus. The Greyhound is the cheapest way to travel if you want to travel long distances.
Levitt reported his stories using his own music. This led to a BBC documentary and book shining a light on income inequality in America. It's told through the loss of loved ones, the plight of undocumented immigrants, and the struggles of exfelons readjusting to society. Here, it's so much more personal.
Right.
To see their faces.
And to personalize it, and then also, I think, then people can identify with it. Because not only do they can put a face and a story to an issue, but then also, it might resonate with something that they've experienced or somebody that they know who's had a similar experience as well. And I think that really is the key to making change.
Get onboard Greyhound Diaries, that's at LA's Museum of Social Justice at 115 Paseo de la Plaza at El Pueblo in downtown. The exhibit is free.
The Greyhound Diaries exhibit runs through May 26. A new community basketball court is unveiled. Council District 9 connects residents to employers looking to hire, and a group of women are honored for their hard work. All this in CityB. Students in Watts celebrated the opening of the new Clippers Community Courts at the shared campus of the U High School and Charles Drew Middle School. Councilman Joe Buscaino welcomed rapper and community activist Styx, whose impassioned support for the project was the driving force behind it becoming a reality.
I'm going after organizations and sports teams that represent and that back places from where I come from and the faces that look like me, that support those faces.
Empower LA held their 2019 Awards banquet at City Hall. The annual awards recognize LA neighborhood councils who have been leaders in civic engagement and responsiveness to their communities' needs. Council District 9 recently partnered with AAA for a job fair in South LA. AAA has many positions available and is especially interested in hiring local applicants.
A lot of our people are coming back and wanting to stay within their neighborhoods and work, and we have a plethora of jobs to be able to supply.
He was a labor leader and civil rights activist who dedicated his life standing up for farm workers' rights. Cesar Chavez fought for equal treatment, pay, and decent working conditions. His contributions were celebrated with some food and fun during a day of remembrance.
Let us bless this day, bless this community. Amen.
And we're just happy to be here with you, celebrating the life of Cesar Chavez.
Today, we are at the Great Lock High School in South Los Angeles, celebrating Cesar Chavez Day. It's a great opportunity for the community to come together and really celebrate our values of the dignity of labor, the dignity of community, and the dignity of citizenship.
Having an amazing time honoring the memory of Cesar Chavez. There is so much we can learn from him and from the life that he lived. He was a champion for labor, a champion for immigrants, a champion for equity.
On issues of fairness and issues of equity, things that we still struggle to achieve in this country. And we are a great place, a great city, but we still have a lot of work to do.
Now that he is no longer with us, it is our job to continue his legacy and the work that he did.
We appreciate you for bearing the spirit of Cesar Chavez. Congratulations, sir.
It really means a lot to the community here. There's not a lot of events that happen here, so we're very thankful for that. There's a lot of vendors, there's a lot of community members. The food is great, the music is great, you know, all the tables that you go to, there's resources.
I did not wake up this morning thinking that I would be at a wonderful event such as this one.
Come enjoy family, come enjoy fun, but most of all, come celebrate the tradition of activism.
Wishing everybody a wonderful Cesar Chavez Day, and si se puede!
Enjoy a lineup of features and shorts from Indian filmmakers. Check out a new exhibit highlighting the Harlem Renaissance, and find your next great read at the Festival of Books. All this and things to do. You're invited to attend the 17th Annual Indian Film Festival of Los Angeles. Enjoy a prestigious lineup of narrative and documentary features, shorts, and star-studded gala events. It's all happening at the Indian Film Festival of Los Angeles, April 11 through the 14. The festival will take place at Regal LA Live at 1,000 West Olympic Boulevard. For more details, visit indianfilmfestival.org. Discover the works of Harlem Renaissance photographer Kwame Brothwaite in a new exhibit entitled "Black is Beautiful." This photo exhibit will include iconic images that amplified one of the most influential cultural movements of the 1960s. "Black is Beautiful," the photography of Kwame Brothwaite, opens April 11 and runs through August of 2019. The exhibit will be held at Skirball Cultural Center located at 2701 North Sepulveda Boulevard. For more info, visit skirball.org. It's the country's largest celebration of its kind. The Los Angeles Times Festival of Books returns to write another chapter in the hearts of SoCal book lovers. Explore authors old and new with over 400 booths and tables, book signings, readings, and more. So grab your required reading wish list and head on down to the Los Angeles Times Festival of Books, happening April 13 and 14, beginning at 10 a.m. The festival will be held at the USC University Park Campus at 1335 Truesdale Parkway. For details, visit events.latimes.com/festivalofbooks. And that's a look at some things to do. That's it for this edition. I'm Yana Kay. From all of us here at LA This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. We're also on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. See you next time for more of LA This Week.
Good morning, good morning. If everyone would please take their seats. Today is Tuesday, April 9. Want to welcome you to City Hall, this Los Angeles City Council meeting. Shhh. Madam Clerk, we do have a quorum. Would you call a roll?
Bloomingfield, Bonin, Buscaino, Sadio, Aristos, Weezer, Corretts, Krikorian, Martinez, Oferel, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Smith, Wesson, 10 members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Bloomingfield moves. Buscaino seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Rue moves. Corretts seconds. That brings us where?
Mr. President, today is Tuesday, and time for the flag salute.
Okay, if we could all rise, we'll be led today by Mr. Bloomingfield, if you would lead us.
Certainly. If I could ask everyone to place their right hand over their hearts. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Bloomingfield. Okay, let's continue with the agenda.
Mr. President, there is a request to continue items 1F and 1J for 30 days to May 8.
Okay, so without objection, continue.
Items 1 through 4 are items noticed for public hearing.
Do you have cards on these items?
Yes, there are cards on all four items.
Okay, then continue.
Items 5 through 28 are items for which public hearings have been held.
All right, Mr. Bloomingfield?
I'd like to call item 5 special, please.
Let's hold item 5. Any other specials? If not, let's prepare to vote on the remaining items. Please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Continue.
Items 29 through 58 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Do you have cards on these items?
There are cards on items 43, 45, 46, 47, 48, 51, and 52.
Okay, let's hold those items and prepare to vote on the remaining items. If you would please open the roll.
And excuse me, Mr. President, I believe there is a request also to hold 49 for a substitute motion.
Let's hold that as well, and vote on the remaining items. Please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Mr. Weezer?
Can we send 53 and 56 forthwith, please?
Forthwith? 41 as well. Okay, that brings us where?
And, Mr. President, those ordinances will be held over one week unless reconsidered later today with 12 members present.
Okay, thank you. I would anticipate we would get there, so just remind me, and then we'll take care of it.
And then, Mr. President, that then takes council back to presentations, items called special or general public comment.
Okay, let's start off quickly. I want to do some multi-public comment, so if I could get Mr. Previn. And, Mr. Previn, I have you on items 1 through 1L, and then items 2, 3, 45, 51, and then 52 through 57, your general public comment. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you, sir. First of all, welcome to Bernice Knoflin, who's going to try to provide a little bit of oversight along with the others on the HHH Oversight Committee.
Let's stay on the items, Mr. Previn.
I believe that's item 52. I'm sorry, is that not her? Fabolous? Is that acceptable? I signed up on 52. She's an HHH Oversight member. Okay, I just want to make sure that we're not in any kind of confusion there. Don't interrupt me, sir, because it's a First Amendment issue. Now, the point is, is that this group is doing a great job of keeping track of the HHH money. To refresh your memory, 1.2 billion, about 125 recently chunked off by the mayor for the Red Flag, not Red Flag, but the RED program, where he'll be investigating ways around some of the more pesky rules. Now, the good news about HHH is that they're making available, we've got Miguel Santana, the former CAO up there, he's got a good eye. The one little small wrinkle, and I would ask Kofflin or Knoflin, I believe it is, to look into this, which is to make audio recordings of those particular hearings where all the information is orally presented by Rushmore Cervantes, Meg Barkley, all the great spinners. We want to hear it more than just once in passing, so that's why we make audio recordings. There's a company called Granicus, I know the guy in the audio. Good to see you, sir. You're doing a great job of adjusting the levels of the mics. What we want to do is just provide the same service we provide for other committee hearings. I know Bloomingfield has been a leader in ITA, and, sir, you've been a leader at trying to get a television studio down there with the ITA, 36 million. So I just think that we should try to find a way to make those recordings available so that the little groups around the city who really do care, there's a feeling that we're not compassionate. Buscaino, we have the head of county mental health, Jonathan Sharon, coming on Friday night. I'd like Corretts and Ebstein to consider waiving their No Chavis Meeting Program and come to talk with our community about what we're experiencing. And, you know, what we're experiencing is not altogether what you might think. We are not a pitchfork brigade in Studio City. We have a lot of compassionate people who want to try to work with the local groups. I know Krikorian's not here right now, and Rue certainly is not really present, he's just checked out, because what he does is really bad. What he does is he pretends to be the good reform guy with our neighborhood council stuff. And here's where we got hurt, sir, on this agenda today. We have been told that in our neighborhood, we cannot promote our own election with our own money. So it's a very weird detail, sir, and hopefully, I know you were influential with Grace and the mayor in the last round when the whole LA Times thing cropped up. So if you could take, yeah, no, I'm happy to just wrap it up and go to my general public comment if you want. Yeah. So in the general public comment, Fabolous, again, I never at homin, I'm always on point. You are the city attorney, and working for the city attorney now has to be a little bit conflict-y, because the city attorney's been taking the lead on making the calls. There's an Ethics Commission item on your agenda, I believe, tomorrow morning in rules, where you're looking at the behest. Lot of great work being done by the city attorney on the ethics, but the problem is he had a little fire in the firehouse where he got, one of his guys was taking referral fees, sir, and on one of the big cases, the largest case, was Goldfroy, where you, sir, signed off twice because the mayor was out of town. This is a stinker beyond belief, and he can't be the guy who's making the readings on Greg Smith, who's the waste management lobbyist currently seated guy, currently trying to bring 600 grand to Myers-Nave to start a waste management lawsuit. I mean-- I mean, we have to find a way to get some kind of independent oversight, because Mike Fuer is conflicted at the moment. We love that he's helping with the FAA, and we definitely know that he'll come on Friday to talk with mental health if that's what people in Studio City want to do, because he wants to make it clear that he cares about people. Thank you, sir.
Miss McAllister, you have items 4, 47, 48, 51, and 52. Miss McAllister, and then your general public comment. Good morning.
Good to see you. All right, let's start with, I want to talk about the election. You got an item here on the agenda, how you want to consolidate the elections, and I want people to know that you can get on the ballot. See, the way we're going to get them out of office is if we just flood the ballot with about 15, 20, 25, 30 people. Now, all you need to get on the ballot is 500 to 1,000 signatures for the mayor, so go through your, oh, you can get the whole city for the mayor. But the city council, you need 500 to 1,000 signatures, that's it. Now, if you pay $300, you only have to get 500 signatures. Okay, now, we want to flood the ballot, then we can get them out of here. We get the mayor out, we can get some people from the community on the ballot. So, about in July, go to the, they took the elections office out of City Hall, it's right behind Western Union, 555 Ramirez Street. So, walk through Western Union, and that's at that building on the third floor. Get that information, or go to the website clerk.lacity.org/elections, okay? So, we're going to get you on the ballot, and we can pick who we want to be in office. These guys, these Democrats, we're going to get them out of here, okay? Now, I want to talk about some of the other items on the agenda, and one is about all this money you guys got floating around to clean up, 32,000, to clean up a tunnel. A one-time cleanup, what kind of mess is that? Now, I went to the controller's office, I asked him, I said, "Do we get receipts when we do these things, get this money?" He said, "No, there are no receipts." You guys have free will to get all the money you want to get, you don't have to bring any receipts to the city or anything. How are you going to clean up a tunnel for $32,000, a one-time cleanup? It doesn't make sense. And then, you want millions of dollars for new, so-called new housing, okay? 28.5 million here for construction and rehab. Now, which one are you doing? Are you constructing or are you rehabbing? See, all, the terminology is not even right here, and this is an old school here, 1901 Venice, okay? So, we don't know what you're doing with the money. I'm concerned, because that's my money too, my taxpayers' money. Now, here, 11681-Foot Hill, you want 22.9 in revenue bonds. Now, you're not using HHH money. Like the Speaker just said, you've got 1.2 billion in HHH, you're going into revenue bonds talking about you're going to build something. Now, remember, I went to those addresses where you were supposed to build HHH, and they weren't being built. So, how do we know you're going to take this 22.9 million and all that and build these multifamily housing units? Somebody's going to, the people are going to have to start riding around and investigating. We cannot trust this council. I see the money, I see the waste, and it really disturbs me. Now, I want to mention about, give my condolences to the young man who died, who was killed, rather, Mr. Hustle, Nipsey Hustle.
You want to go to your general public?
Yes, sir, thank you. Nipsey Hustle, and I want to say that I'm very disappointed in Christopher Darden, who's representing this young man who supposedly killed Mr. Hustle. We have African-Americans by the thousands laying on Skid Row everywhere throughout the city, throughout the state of California, we have African-Americans. And that is against the law, that's against the law as far as the UNRWA Act, and it applies to housing discrimination. Now, we want Mr. Darden and these other African-American attorneys to start representing our people and getting them off the street. I'm learning law myself, I got a deposition with LAUSD at the end of May, okay? So, I'm not playing with you. If I have to go to law school, I want to take some of you out of here. There's a legal way to do this, and I'm learning how to do it illegally. Everything that I am today, African-Americans, got me where I am, all through my life. No white folks ever helped me, African-Americans, African-American men helped me, never tried to hit on me or anything. I owe my life to my people, and I'm going to give back to my people. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's, Ms. Pierman, you're going to be next, but, Madam Clerk, let's vote on items 48, 51, 52, 53, 55, 56, and 57.
What numbers did I put in?
Wait, 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 wait. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, I'm going to call on Ms. Pierman, but I want to go to Ms. Rodriguez first.
With, please?
28?
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight, forthwith. Okay, Ms. Pierman, and, Madam Clerk and Mr. City Attorney, she'll be the last multi-speaker of today. Items 1, 45, 46, and 47. Go ahead, Ms. Pierman.
Okay, on number one, we have, again, a bunch of liens. All of these liens, and these are people that are having extra money. Now, if you're a large corporation and you do things wrong, they don't care, they look on the table, but anybody does anything wrong, they're like their chimney size is wrong and things like that, or they put trash in the wrong area, then they come up with these liens and fines, and, of course, eventually, they probably get, they cut them down so that the people pay for them. In the meantime, though, people are extremely upset seeing these liens. So, I don't think we need really, like, 12 liens on the poor taxpayers and forgiveness for the large corporations who, of course, throw things and give, they swamp the land with all their pollution, and, of course, that was okay, because they have money they can give over to the politicians and the city council members. So, okay, I'm going to go on to number 45. Oh, that's the elections. So, I'm going to go on to number 45 now. So, yes, I agree with her, we need to have people flooding in to get rid of these, get rid of you city council members, because apparently, I really don't believe that you care for the more, the regular person. All you care is for your pet projects and areas that can give you money. That shows off when you don't let us speak a lot. So, and, but I don't really like the March idea. I liked to have it when it was later, in June. I really don't see why we need to have one in March. It makes it harder for people to get the money together to be able to run for city council. So, I think you're doing this to make it hard for people to be able to get the money and bring up and get, and, of course, when we have the mayor telling people what he thinks the people should vote for, you can pretty much kiss goodbye if you're running against one of his special people. So, they never win when you have the mayor interfering with our elections. So, I don't like that.
Let's give her her minute for general.
No, no, I mean, just take real fast, I'm on number 45. Okay, number 45, I just, I didn't know it was going so slow. Okay, good, see, that's good, I'm the Hilton, so.
Okay, now, your general comment.
Okay, I'll have to do it in public comment. Okay, number 40, anyway, the Hilton, it's good about the Hilton, our democracy must be constitution-based. The Sharia law goes against the constitution worse, of course, the execution, stony, flogging, severing of limbs, and, of course, hatred of the Jews. It's a dangerous precedence, so we must be able to get rid of, we can't have Sharia law in this country. All of it is, a lot of it, too much is against the constitution, having, forcing women to cover. But unfortunately, our democracy level might bring socialism in, might bring in Sharia law, because if people vote for it, unfortunately, it's, even though it's constitution-based, it could go in. And by the way, I don't like you city councilmen.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. All right, I'd like to, that, again, that concludes multi-public comment. Now, let's vote on items 2, 3, 4, 45, 46, and 47. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
And, Madam Clerk, do you want to do the reconsideration? Mr. Weezer?
Item 52, can we send that forthwith on behalf of Councilmember Harris Dawson, please?
Yes.
Yes, and, Mr. President, if you'd like to reconsider the odds for items 6 and items 29 through 40.
Okay, let's vote on reconsideration, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Take your time, 40 is the last one.
Twelve ayes.
Thank you. Now, let's actually vote on the items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, Mr. Rue, I was looking for Mr. Rue. Are you ready for your presentation? Mr. Rue?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. Today is National Library Workers' Day. Our city librarians do so much to support our communities, our families, and our young people, and we all know that as stewards of a shared community space, they go above and beyond to serve the public. Of the hundreds of Los Angeles Public Library's employees in the 72 branches, there is one librarian in particular that I am proud to honor today, and that is Senior Librarian at the Will and Ariel Durant Library in Hollywood, Mr. John Frank. John Frank has done a lot of incredible things in his life. He was a joke writer for Joan Rivers, he ran the Black Box Theater in Santa Monica, and he runs a writing workshop and open-mic night to this very day. But as a Los Angeles City Librarian, John has not only continued to do his incredible creative work, but has improved the lives of countless Angelenos across our city. He has helped redefine what a modern library is, as not just a quiet, stuffy place, but as a public space full of life, rich with arts and culture. John has hosted a one-act festival at the Brentwood-Westwood and West LA branches. He produced a Lenny Bruce tribute at the Central Library featuring Paul Krasner. He's produced Shakespeare festivals and the West Coast premiere of the Grammy-winning series, American Epic, as well as established a performing arts professional collection at the Durant Library. The Durant Library is Hollywood's most beloved library, but it still faces its share of challenges like so many other public spaces. The Durant Library has become a place of refuge for homeless Angelenos, and our librarians are on the front lines of our homeless crisis, day in and day out. John Frank, rather than ignoring these, ignoring those experiencing homelessness, knows that libraries turn no one away. John met these unhoused Angelenos where they are, treated them as patrons and as people, and worked to get the resources that they need. Our city libraries are so much more than a collection of books and computers. They teach life skills, English, and citizenship. They are there for small business owners and for working students, and they are there to inform and empower every part of our diverse city. John has led with humanity at the Durant Library, showing our city how compassion is our most powerful resource. John's work at The Source brings resources for homeless individuals to the Durant Library, offering ID cards, haircuts, health services, housing assessments, and so much more. Just to give you an example, we have a short video of some of that incredible work. If we could roll the video?
14 years ago, I got clean and sober off of drugs and alcohol. I was taught I have to give it back in order to keep. I felt like I needed to come and start giving back to where I, you know, started from. The motto is, if we all do a little, we can help out a lot. The Source here is doing a lot. I knew it was a great organization, and it was a safe place for me to come and do haircuts. I'm here, and I'm hooking up David with a good haircut, and maybe David could go get a job working in a kitchen, start cooking again.
Thank you. The work that John Frank and so many other city librarians do could never be fully summed up, but I'm proud to have with me someone who can try, and that's our city librarian, John Zabel. John?
Thank you, good morning, council members, and thank you to you all, and certainly, special thanks to Councilmember Rue for recognizing National Library Week, National Library Workers' Day, and a fabulous example of librarians at LAPL, the wonderful John Frank. As you all know, we are so fortunate at the LA Public Library to have world-class collections, outstanding library buildings, both contemporary and historic, strong support from this city council, our mayor, and certainly, Angelenos throughout the city. But our greatest asset, as each of you know, is the staff of the LA Public Library who work so hard every day, not only to encourage a lifelong love of reading and to promote the books and literary resources, but who really meet the needs of Los Angeles every day in each one of our libraries. And John Frank is just such a tremendous example of that. Our staff are dedicated, they're passionate, they all have a sense of the mission of the library, whether it's truck drivers on the road, clerks, children's librarians, those who work behind the scenes, and those who work on the front lines. And John, Senior Librarian at our Will and Ariel Branch, Will and Ariel Durant Branch Library, is a great example of a librarian with a heart. And I've seen that when I've been at that branch library, as he serves everyone equitably and endeavors to make certain that the library services of that branch really meet the needs of everyone in that community. And when we think about John and the services that the library provides, like The Source, we're reminded that people come to the library for all sorts of things. They come for books, they come for technology exhibits, storytime, musical programs, cultural programs, and to take their first step on the path to citizenship. But it's also really important to remember, and I try to talk about this as much as I can, that people every day come into the LA Public Library looking for respect. And that is an important service of our library, an important thing that the staff of our library provides. They, people come for that safe haven, that personal interaction, and our library provides that, and John Frank is just an exceptional example of that. And John, as the council member mentioned, and as the video certainly demonstrates, has been a champion of a service that we have at seven of our libraries called The Source, where we bring up to 15 different social service agencies and other entities together to provide one-stop shopping, essentially, for those experiencing homelessness. So, Department of Mental Health, Department of Public and Social Services, DMV, Los Angeles Homeless Services Authority. And this is a high-impact service and a great way and a great example of how the library leverages its presence in the community to make a difference in the issue of homelessness. Just as an example, in March, at John's branch, The Source served 158 individuals experiencing homelessness. And that's something that we're proud of and something I know John is proud of. And, of course, with John's great background, he has been a champion of cultural programs, children's services, and really, all of the initiatives that the LA Public Library provides. So, again, I want to thank Councilmember Rue for recognizing John and really, all of the people that work at the LA Public Library, and thank you all for your continued support of the great and important work that we do every day. And now, it is my pleasure to introduce a true rock star librarian, John Frank.
Thank you. We don't get a lot of applause at the library. Thank you for this honor, Councilmember Rue. I'm proud to share it with the library staff, our tireless volunteers, our dedicated civic partners, and, most importantly, our patrons. I joined the Los Angeles Public Library after more than 25 years in private industry, where customer satisfaction was central to our success. I continue to embrace this principle at the Will and Ariel Durant Branch Library, where I'm the Senior Librarian. The Los Angeles Public Library system serves the largest and most diverse population of any library system in the nation, and we welcome all people. We connect adults, veterans, childrens, and family with resources, whether it's a middle-school student looking for a Harry Potter book or someone down on Merwak seeking information on shelter for the night. Merwak seeking information on shelter for the night, we welcome everyone. At the library, we all belong. Homelessness is an issue impacting all of us. We are proud to play a role in helping to address this with comprehensive programs such as the Source. The Source is a monthly resource fair for those in need at the Durant Branch. The Source brings, on an average, between a hundred and fifty and two-hundred people, both clients and providers, together each month. Those experiencing homelessness or going through tough times, come to the Source for a meal, housing assessments, IDs, cell phones, job preparation, transportation to local shelters, and even haircuts. And perhaps our most important resource, respectful human interaction. The library is the heart of the community, the lifeblood that links people to education and employment, enrichment and enjoyment. And the Los Angeles Public Library is committed to the vital work of providing resources to every valued patron who walks through our doors. Thank you for entrusting this great responsibility to us, and I am honored to be here today as a representative of the scores of dedicated and talented people who work at the Los Angeles Public Library. Thank you.
Mr. Rue, uh, would it be all right if I, uh, recognized Mr. Rodriguez at this time?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Rue, for bringing in this wonderful presentation. Mr. Frank, I think your comments really underscore how, not just how special you are in taking on the responsibility that you have, um, but really being an example of what so many of our city librarians contribute in our communities each and every day. Thank you for having that service-oriented mindset. Uh, I think it's a very special one, and given the role that you have and the leadership that you're exemplifying, uh, in our city libraries are really, it's just magnificent. Thank you so much for your dedicated service to our city, to our communities. Um, and thank you for extending yourself in such a meaningful way and, and really reflecting how diverse of a level of service our city libraries are in so many of our communities throughout Los Angeles. And, you know, John, I, I, I have a tremendous amount of admiration for your leadership, and I think it's reflective, you know, given Mr. Frank and so many of the city librarians that we count on. Thank you all so much for your service.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, members. And, you know, let's, uh, John Frank said earlier that librarians don't normally get a round of applause. They deserve a round of applause every single day. So let's give John Frank on behalf of all the librarians another big round of applause. And with that, I'd like to present this, from the City of Los Angeles, this resolution honoring the work of Librarian John Frank. Thank you, John.
Uh, Madam Clerk, let's continue item one E for thirty days. That would be May eighth.
Yes, and there's an additional request to continue one A for thirty days to May eighth also.
Without objection. Okay, let's do item forty-nine. We're gonna, we need a vote to substitute. So on item forty-nine, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
And, uh, we will continue that item till next Tuesday, I believe, Madam Clerk, the sixteenth of April.
That is correct. That is correct.
If I could get Antonio Ramirez to come forward. Ms. Ramirez, are you here? You have item one, one minute. Give her one minute on item one, and then her general public comment.
Thank you very much, sir. I'll go ahead and do my public comments instead. Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, I just want to let you know that I just spoke to Matt and Tony, LAPD officers parked by La Placita. I told them that there's spyware in all the bathrooms in La Placita. It also, at Grand Park, there's a whole bunch of fucking wetbacks and gangbangers all over the old Veda bathrooms, when you go down the steps. That's one of them. Be careful. You got a lot of Asian tourists, you got a lot of foreigners and visitors, please don't use the La Placita fucking toilets. And second of all, ladies and gentlemen, um, these fucking wetbacks and gangbangers, again, the fucking Latinos are pussies. Wetbacks and gangbangers are pussies. They beat, attack, rob, and vandalize and graffiti women's things. Women's are always subjected to crimes, hate crimes, by these fucking wetback Latino chango pussies. Even those fuckers who work here at the city, like Gil Cedillo, who's another fucking pussy and his staff. Many of them don't help, don't encourage, and don't protect women. We need to get these goddamn bastards back out, and we want the border wall up, and we want to shut down the border. Shut down the border.
Thank you, Ms. Ramirez. Thank you, Ms. Ramirez, your time has expired. Thank you. Okay. Shimari? Followed by Gus Torres.
Good morning. I'm not nearly going to be that angry. Good morning, City Council. My name is Shimari Davis. I'm IBW Local Eleven Business Rep, representing over twelve thousand members. Uh, and a lot of those members work in the California oil and gas industry, so I just wanted to do a public comment about that setback that's coming up. I just want to reinforce the message that this, this affects thousands of working families. A lot of our jobs support the California and oil-gas industry, and we want to make sure that this is seen properly. Um, Los Angeles continues to grow, and there are a number of concerns, and we definitely are, um, affected by the air quality as well. We work there, so we want to make sure that it's safe for all. Um, I urge you to consider and review, um, people's livelihoods, because this is going to affect a lot of economic impacts in the city. So any restrictions on those electrical and energy operations really, really, truly affects our members and our working families in Los Angeles. So please, make sure you look at that properly, um, and we want to make sure it's fair. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Gus Torres, Jorge Nunez, Gina Burnett, Jose Pina, please come forward.
Uh, good morning. My name's Gus Torres. I'm here on behalf of UA Local Two-Fifty, pipe fitters, welders, and apprentices. I'm here because it is important that our brothers and sisters in the energy industry are able to continue working. Together, we share the same goal of keeping communities and workers safe and the environment clean. Oil and gas production has been a vital part of the Los Angeles economy for nearly a hundred years, providing safe, reliable oil production, well-paying jobs, and affordable energy supply for consumers and businesses. Please think about these families before taking action that threatens local oil and gas production. Thank you for your time, and God bless.
Okay, next speaker, please identify yourself.
Good morning. My name is Gina Burnett, and I'm here on behalf of Creed, LA. I'm here to support good jobs for all of our residents. Regulations in California are the toughest environmental regulations in the nation, and I, and are specifically designed to protect public health and safety by controlling air emissions for people living and working near production facilities. Allowing production to continue in LA is essential for local economy, and we urge you to look at the economic impacts that would result from making, well, that would result from making any changes to the codes. Thank you.
Yes, please identify yourself, and, uh, Yuna and Gio Galazza. Yes, sir.
Good morning. My name is Jose Pina with Creed, LA. And, uh, unlike oil-producing countries where workers don't have the same rights and job conditions are dangerous, jobs in the oil and gas industry here in California are reliable and safe. Why would we want to stop the industry here and fund the industry in other countries where there are human rights issues and poor environmental oversight? We share concerns about local air quality, but other factors need to be considered, like freeway proximity and other production and manufacturing facilities. Any changes to the current codes will disrupt the local economy without improving public health, as there are many other factors at fault. Thank you.
Yes, next speaker. Good to see you.
Yes, hi. My name is Gio Galazza, and I'm here to encourage keeping our community safe and keeping our industries and employment opportunities strong. Don't err it down on industry that supports our economy and provides good wages. The oil-gas industry has consistently fought to support diversity and provide jobs to local Angelinos from different educational backgrounds. I understand that natural resources and foundational is very foundational to our economy, national security, and the way of life. As leaders in the industry, the local producers here offer good, safe jobs and have the strictest safety standards in the nation. Thank you very much. My name is Gio Galazza.
Okay, so, did we get, uh, did anyone else sign up to speak that? Please, come on up and identify yourself.
Buenos dias, good morning. Uh, my name is Salvador Barrasa. I'm the owner at thirty-nine oh-six Griffin Avenue. I believe it's an issue of lien on the property. Um, I'm here to inform the council, as I've already informed the inspector, one of the inspectors on the case, that I will be residing on that property. Uh, it's no longer a rental unit, which was the cause of all this problem. So I'm just here to also inform the, the council if there's something they can do in regards to situations like this, where, uh, the renters are damaging the property, calling the inspectors, and then we fix it, and then they damage it again, and then it leads to the situation, uh, that I'm in now. As well as the HPOZ should reconsider some of their policies. Uh, they're asking me to replace a, uh, a window that was already in place. It was an aluminum-framed window. It was already there when I bought the property. And, uh, in their picture that they have on the HPOZ, it shows an aluminum window, and now they want me to replace it with an unfriendly, unenvironmentally-friendly, uh, wood window, um, that will eventually need to be replaced again, and we got to chop down some more trees for wooden windows when vinyl looks just as well.
Well, let, let me suggest this. If you see the gentleman, I think he has on a orange tie, why don't you chat with him before we vote on this item? Uh, I should have made myself clear. Anybody for general public not comment, not on an item. But no, you're okay. So if you talk to the gentleman in the orange tie, then hopefully he can help you. Anybody else on general public comment? Identify yourself.
Uh, Yuna, morning, Mr. President. I came USA about two years ago with a car. I walk all around LA, and I'm sorry, but I have to say, LA is most dirty mega-city that I have ever seen. I know you have a budget, so I have an idea. I have many community church, community center, religion sports club, uh, campus school. There are many resources as a volunteer, but as you know, Mr. President, many volunteer work focus on people, not, not so much as, uh, environment. But I see Main Street is very clean, and every people has authority to live in a clean authority, in a clean environment. So I suggest you, if you support just little budget, like a big trash bag and, uh, tools for pick-up the trash, uh, maybe volunteer group call many people.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, did we get Mr. Nunez? Okay, so that closes general public, uh, comment. I'd like to, uh, move, if we could, to item five. I want to recognize Mr. Bloomingfield. Item five, I believe, uh...
Thank you very much. Colleagues, on this item, abusing disabled placards is a particularly heinous thing to do. And so many people do it these days that they get lulled into a false sense that somehow it's okay. Well, it's not okay. When you abuse a disabled placard, you are either taking a spot away from someone who really needs it, or you're abusing that privilege and diluting it and making it difficult for everybody else to get around Los Angeles. Now, in the spring of 2013, thanks to the late Councilmember Bill Rosendahl, uh, he introduced a motion, a resolution which this council adopted that implemented the California Vehicle Code section that prohibited the misuse of disabled pla, parking placards or special licenses. Unfortunately, that act has not prevented the widespread abuse of these placards. So today, we're taking another step to stem that abuse. We are adding a monetary penalty, the maximum monetary penalty that we can under state law. It seems that that, unfortunately, is the only way that we are going to actually be able to stop people from this unethical behavior and taking disabled spots away from people who truly need it. And I should say, not only is it a, is it a, is it a heinous thing in and of itself, but it leads to this, this pattern where people start abusing other laws as well, when it becomes acceptable to abuse this kind of a law. One of my, uh, my own staff members in a previous career did a snapshot of Westwood Village and discovered that forty percent of the spaces had disabled placards hanging in their window, including an elevator repair company. Another example, last September, the DMV issued a press release that three-hundred-and-forty-five people were caught abusing disabled placard, parking placards, over four days at the LA County Fair alone. I could give you lots of different examples, but everyone here knows it, and we see it. You see all the spaces downtown with the disabled placards on it, and you know that most of those folks, or a lot of those folks, are not actually disabled. Now, I'm not saying, of course, disability, some disabilities you can't see, and you need to be sensitive to that, but there are ways to find out if somebody is actually using it appropriately, and we know that so many people are abusing this. Now, the California Vehicle Code section gives us the authority to levy a fine of up to eleven-hundred dollars on someone who misuses a disabled pla, placard. Maybe that will stop able-bodied individuals from infringing on the rights of the disabled or abusing this privilege that is reserved for those who are disabled. So I urge you to vote aye to move this forward and to finally take an important step on cracking down on this, this terrible practice. Thank you.
Mr. Rue?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to rise to, uh, thank Councilmember Bloomingfield for leadership on, on this issue, because, um, for disabled placards in my district, there has also been a, a sidebar issue which no one thought of, of these unscrupulous operators who are using disabled placards on, um, these advertisement vans that often advertises, uh, often not very, uh, good issues, and, and they park it in front of schools. Um, so, um, thank you so much for your leadership on this, and I just wanted to point out that this will be so helpful in my district as well and, and throughout the City of Los Angeles as well. Thank you.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
All right. Let's move now to item forty-three. I have a Sinema, a Sinemi Kraft, Michael Doshi, Melissa Aguayo, please come forward. Please come forward, and I apologize, I know I butchered somebody's name. Yes?
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. So my name is Sinemi Kraft, and I'm here on behalf of Greenpeace, um, and myself. So we strongly support the report. We need to know what is going on with our plastic. People think it's okay to use plastic because they think that putting it in the blue bin is okay, because they don't know that only eight percent of all plastics is actually recycled, and that some plastics, for example, with the little triangles, um, at the bottom of the containers with numbers four through seven, are not even recyclable. So I live in Redondo Beach. I surf a lot, I go to the beach a lot, I volunteer with organizations that do beach cleanups. When I did the cleanup at, um, Cherry Beach, in Long Beach, I could pick up the biggest items, like plastic bottles, plastic straws, plastic bags, but they... like plastic bottles, plastic straws, plastic bags, but there were so many microplastics that I wasn't even to pick everything.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we support the report.
Next speaker, please.
Hello. My name is Michael Doshi, and I am the Waste Investigations Manager at Algalida Marine Research and Education, who has been focusing on plastic pollution prevention for over 20 years. Councilmember Kocorian, when you put that Doritos bag into a recycling bin today, I've been to where away is. Most recently, in November of 2018, I went on a waste investigation with the Story of Stuff project to the island of Java in Indonesia. In Surabaya in East Java, I saw where our plastic packaging, food packaging, things such as plastic bags, and Amazon packaging actually ends up. Not the environment that it affects, but also the people that it affects. I saw smokestacks burning plastic less than 50 yards away from schools. I bring this up because it is so important for us to continue to take the next steps to create a zero-waste plastic economy in the City of Los Angeles, and I encourage you to vote to move forward with this report from the Bureau of Sanitation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Hi, everyone. My name is Melissa Aguayo. I am the Advocacy and Education Director at the Five Gyres Institute, and I'm here representing a coalition of organizations like Hilda Bay, Surf Rider, Padres Pioneros, and others, who are all dedicated to protecting our oceans. There's this idea that plastic, that orgs like ours want to ban all plastic. Plastic in and of itself isn't really the problem, but rather our mismanagement, overuse, and reliance on a material that is made to last forever, which we use for items that last minutes. While cheap at the store, it comes with a lot of external costs, some of which my colleague just mentioned. And the China ban has only shone light on the elephant in the room, which is that we cannot recycle ourselves out of this problem, but rather have to look at ways that we can slow the flow of plastic. And not just with bans, which are important, but we must look for solutions that work for our city, for all Angelenos. Cities like Berkeley, San Diego, and Santa Monica have already looked at comprehensive source reduction ordinances, and the state is primed to do the same with SB 54 and AB 1020. As a lifelong Angelino, I hope that we can lead the way and show the state how it's done.
Thank you. So let us prepare to vote. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, Madam Clerk, on item 1G, the gentleman was here earlier. We chatted about it. We're going to continue that item for 30 days until May 8th. So that's the item 1G. Now, I believe we can vote on items, the, what's left on the...
Yes, and, Mr. President, on item 1, the Department of Building and Safety recommends that items 1H and K be received and filed as the liens have been paid in full, and that the remaining liens be confirmed for 1B, C, D, I, and L.
Okay. So let's do that. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That brings us where? Mr. O'Farrell? Forty-seven, forthwith. Madam Clerk, back to you.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
They are posted. They are referred. Announcements, members, announcements. If we could all rise for adjourning motions. Announcement by Mr. Root.
Thank you, Mr. President. In recognition of National Volunteer Month, Mayor Garcetti and Volunteer LA are hosting volunteer activities and informational fair with nonprofit partners and city departments, but they need your help. Please take a moment to stop by at the Rotunda and Forecourt today until 2:00 p.m. to learn about the various volunteer opportunities and ways we can all give back to the City of LA. And that is today, and it's at the Rotunda and Forecourt until 2:00 p.m. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Root. Mr. Sadio.
Mr. President, as many of you know, my family came north. My dad's side from the state of Durango, 1921, and made a trek north to Barstow, California. But a year ago, I went back to Durango, and I had an incredible experience, the first time someone from my family had returned. We have with us today the, and I was accompanied by the governor, and back to a small, high-desert town of Tawalilo, Durango. It was my Barack Obama moment, returning. As a result, I've developed a friendship with the governor and his team. I'm honored to have with us today Luis Garcia Baron, who is the Director of Migrant Affairs for the State of Durango. He's touring several cities and will be leaving to Chicago shortly. He's here with us today on behalf of...
Just give him a round of applause. Welcome. Welcome.
Thank you.
Any other announcements? Then let's, adjourning motions, Mr. Buscaino.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, ayes, so we rise and adjourn in memory of Nicolasa Teresa Cartenha, a lifelong resident of the South Bay. Nikki, as everyone knew her, was born in 1933 into a large family of nine children and two loving parents who were first-generation immigrants from Mexico. She graduated from high school and married her husband, Daniel. Together, they decided to make Carson their home and establish a family of six children, including her husband's young daughter, Denise, who she adopted. They eventually relocated to Gardena, where their home became a welcoming gathering place for all. Nikki devoted her life to children, coaching her children's sports teams, and keeping them active and involved in their community. Nikki became the beacon for her children and their families, who remember her as gorgeous Grandma Nikki. Our hearts go out to Nikki's family, friends, and colleagues. May she rest in peace. Thank you.
Any more adjourning motions to my left? Now I'm looking to my right. Any adjourning motions to my right? No motions, members, this meeting's adjourned.
Wilmington and San Pedro have always been the gateway to Catalina since back in the late 1800s. My father, myself, and a friend of mine started Catalina Express, along with my brother Tim, in 1981. And we came in to actually replace the seaplanes that were at that point going out of service. So what we needed to do was replace that service with fast boats. So we went out, we bought one boat, it was a 50-passenger, and we started out with doing three runs a day. About a million to a million-two people go to and from Catalina on an annual basis. And back in 1981, when we started, I think we carried 3,500 people that year. Both my daughter Amanda and my son Eric, they're all in the business. This building was actually built back in 1966, and it was the seaplane hangar building. They'd take off underneath the Vincent Thomas Bridge. Our goal was, was really to make it so that people felt their trip started when they got here. There's bocce ball courts here located on premises. There's also a putting green. We got fire pits when it's chilly out, and people do seem to feel like they're on their way to Catalina as soon as they walk through the gate. Wilmington used to be the location for the freight service here to the island, and to bring them both onto the same property has been a home run. The Port of Los Angeles has been a real partner in this all the way along. They worked very well with us in trying to come up with a solution for this move, and I think that what we've come up with is one of the best locations we have. When we brought our employees back to this location, we were able to bring 100 employees back this way. Catalina Express employs approximately 325 employees in total, with the vessel crews and administration and ticket sales and the terminal facilities. Avalon Freight Services employs approximately 26 people, with operating the two vessels that we have, as well as the warehouse here and on the island. The island is always growing. It's been an exciting part of being, not just in passengers, but also in freight now. A normal week of freight going to Catalina Island is five days a week, 15 trailers, it's shipping fuel, it's food, it's beverages, it's everything you can imagine that has to go to an island to keep it moving. My favorite hobbies are getting out and going fishing. It's a lot of fun to go out off the island and do some fishing. It's always been known as a fishing paradise. Well, I think the favorite part of Catalina Express for me is working around the water. I've been around the water all my life. We just like to be a big part of this overall Catalina Express family. Our whole team here has worked hard to build what we've built. There's no ayes here, it's a lot of we's, and we really all enjoy it.